Call to order of the meeting of the Verona City Council at 7:00 PM on Monday, October 28th. We will begin with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next, we'll have the rule.
Alder Person Cronin.
Present.
Alder Person Gaskell. Alder Person Journey.
Here.
Alder Person Kemp.
Here.
Alder Person Cole.
Here.
Alder Person Posey.
Here.
Alder Person Ricky.
Here.
Alder Person Touche is absent and excused.
We have a quorum, so that's good. Next, we will move on to item four, which is public comment. If anyone from the public wishes to speak, now would be the time to do so. All right, I'm not seeing anyone run up to the podium. With that, we'll move on to item five, which is approval of the minutes from the October 14th, 2019 Common Council Meeting. I think so. Is this better? Okay. We're on to item five, which is approval of the minutes from the October 14th, 2019 Common Council Meeting.
So moved.
Motion to move approval by Alder Cole, is there a second? Second by Alder Cronin. Any corrections? Seeing none, all those in favor of the minutes from the approving the minutes, all those in favor of approving the minutes from the October 14th, 2019 Common Council Meeting, say aye.
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 Opposed, no? And that motion passes. Item six is mayor's business. I don't have anything. Item seven, announcements. Any announcements from the council? Seeing none, we will move on to the administrator's report. Mr. Sayer.
Thank you, I have a few announcements tonight. First one is upcoming meetings. We do have a meeting tomorrow night, which is at the fire station at 6:30. I hope everyone's going to be there, so we have a quorum. If you're not going to make it, please let myself know or let Ellen know. We also have a tourism meeting tomorrow at 2:00 PM. One of the items being discussed at that meeting is going to be the budget for the Tourism Commission and for the Chamber for next year. And then also discussion regarding a contract for Destination Wisconsin. The Chamber or the Tourism Commission is looking at partnering with Destination Wisconsin and doing a promotional-type video and show as part of their programming series for the next couple of years. So that is currently in the works. We have active public hearings right now for the Old World of Variety. There's a proposed goodwill store would go in there. And then we're also working on the Whispering Cove's development. We have a JRB meeting, which is Joint Review Board meeting, next Tuesday at 5:30 PM. And then we have budget meetings on November 11th before the council. That's the budget presentation. We have a budget public hearing on the 18th of November. And those are the two council meetings in November for the council, unless something else comes up. And the plan is to have one council meeting on December 18th in December. So if you can mark your calendars accordingly, and if you can't make it in those meetings, just let myself know or let Ellen know.
Alder Ricky, did you have a question?
I have a question about the December 18th as a Wednesday. Is that maybe supposed to be the December 16th council meeting date?
Most likely. Let me just...
Okay.
Yes, you're right. So it is the 16th. Good catch. Thank you. Last meeting we have coming up is we do a personnel meeting this Friday morning at 7:30 AM. At that meeting, we'll be talking about the tentative union contract with the police union. We'll also be discussing a variety of position descriptions in the city. Talking about the open kind of process of filling vacant positions as they become open. Talking about the clothing and purchasing policy for city employees and their buying clothing, the clothing allowance policy. So anyone is welcome to attend that meeting as well. It's at 7:30 AM here at City Hall. The TIF bill, there was another public hearing, I think last week or the week before. I'm losing track of my days. On October 16th, I guess that was two weeks ago? But there was a public hearing before the Assembly Ways and Means Committee. That was actually that the bill has now been voted out of the committee, so it did receive an animus support by that committee. We're hoping that it gets a hearing on the floor of the Assembly in early November. If all goes well, potentially the governor would be signing this in possibly middle of November. The one caveat to this, if there are any delays to this, it will potentially kind of hold up this being resolved this year. The longer it takes, the more difficult it becomes for staff to actually kind of complete this process of getting this corrected. The last update that I have then is just regarding the Shurri Creek Commons Project. I know I've gotten questions from a few of you on it, but just let the council know is that the staff has sent the developer a letter to clean up that property by November 15th. I believe they've been out there already and have cut the grass. And they're working and kind of addressing the other issues out there. And those issues include removing the debris, the building materials, and kind of making it look better. So we're monitoring the situation, but they do have until November 15th to get that cleaned up. And I just wanted to pass that along since I know a few of you have asked me about that. But I'd be happy to answer any questions from the council.
Any questions for Mr. Sayer? Oh, Alder Kemp.
I know we're monitoring it until November 15th. What would happen if they don't comply with the requests?
Potentially citations could be issued.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Mr. Sayer? Seeing none, we will move on to the engineers' report. Ms. Fisher.
Thank you. For the well six pumping station construction, the building footings have been poured and sanitary sewer installation along Wayland Road was anticipated to start last week on Thursday. For the high school, West Verona Ave is still in stage two. Western Circle is still in stage one. Both roads are behind anticipated schedule due to rework that was required during the pavement process. For County Highway M, we just learned that paving is complete north of Verona. And for County Highway PD, Woods Road to County Highway M, the contractor is continuing to work on stage two as well as some work in stage three. Stage two is anticipated to be completed by winter. For the east side interceptor design, the staff has commented on the design study report. Field survey was anticipated to be completed end of last week. And coordination and permitting meetings have occurred with agencies last week. For the Lincoln Street Stormwater Facility facility design, a meeting occurred with the permitting agencies early in October. And the design is proceeding on that project. For the County Highway M resurfacing project, it was so that was the project between or on County Highway M between Verona and Oregon that was completed and opened to traffic on October 17th. And for the County Highway PD Bridge Replacement Project, which is a Dane County project, that construction started October 14th and is anticipated to last four weeks. So that's the highway bridge just west of Shady Oak Lane. So with that, I can take any questions.
Alder Posey.
Thank you. And this might be something we have to do some follow-up on, but I'm just starting to get concerned with the intersection of Verona Avenue and Nine Mountain Road and hearing that this is behind. It's definitely something I would just want to make sure is being monitored. I know we made some changes initially with the budget changes that we were doing for the school district. I think that was initially a light, if I recall. Adam, you can correct me if I'm wrong. But definitely as this is going on, I'm starting to see some more and more dangerous activity at that intersection, just people trying to get across that street.
Okay. Okay, good to know. Thank you.
Thank you.
Other questions or comments on the engineers' report? Seeing none, thank you. We'll move on to committee reports. 10A Finance Committee, Alder Kemp.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First, I'd like to start by making a motion to for the payment of the bills in the amount of $743,469.16.
Motion by Alder Kemp, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Alder Posey. Alder Kemp.
First of all, we have a few payments. Obviously, these aren't as substantial as we've had over the past couple of weeks, so a bitter relief this time. We have a payment of $60,856.31 to AECOM for Verona Municipal Engineering. There's also a payment in the amount of $304,555.14 to the Madison Metro Sewage District. And then there's also a payment of $60,095.35 to Payne and Dolan for some of the County Highway PD reconstruction.
Thank you for that explanation. Questions, comments on paying the bills? Seeing no questions or comments? All those in favor of payment of the bills signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no? And that motion passes. Alder Kemp.
Again, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to make a motion regarding Resolution Number R-19-044 approving the 2020 Fitch Verona EMS operating and capital budgets.
Motion by Alder Kemp, is there a second? Second by Alder Cronin. Alder Kemp.
For the sake of discussion, the annual meeting of the Fitch Verona EMS District was held on October 17th, 2019 for the purposes of reviewing the district's annual report and the 2020 requested operating and capital budgets. The 2020 total proposed operating budget for the district is $3135,521, of which the City of Verona share is $517,278. The 2020 total purpose capital budget is $63,138, of which the City of Verona share is $28,504.
You've heard the explanation? Questions, comments on the resolution? Seeing none, all those in favor of Resolution Number R-19-044 approving the 2020 Fitch Verona EMS operating and capital budgets, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no? And that motion passes. Anything further, Alder Kemp?
Nothing further, thank you.
Thank you. Next, we'll move on to 10B Public Safety and Welfare Committee. Alder Ricky.
Thank you. I would like to make a motion to approve ordinance number 19-949 amending Section 7-1-3 and 7-1-18 of the Code of Ordinances, City of Verona, relating to licensing of dogs and number of dogs allowed.
Motion by Alder Ricky, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Alder Cole. Alder Ricky.
Thank you. The proposed ordinance amendment would eliminate a kennel license requirement and amend the ordinance to allow no more than three dogs in a household. The current ordinance allows no more than two dogs in a household. The kennel license is recommended for elimination from this section as the city does not have any residential kennels and commercial kennels are regulated through the zoning ordinance. This change in the number of dogs allowed will bring the ordinance in line with past practice of issuing dog licenses and clarify the number of dogs allowed for enforcement purposes.
Thank you for that explanation. Questions, comments on this motion? Seeing none, all those in favor of ordinance number 19-949 amending Section 7-1-3 and 7-1-18 of the Code of Ordinances, City of Verona, relating to licenses of dogs and number of dogs allowed, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no? And that motion passes. Anything further, Alder Ricky?
No, that is all.
Thank you. Next, we'll move on to 10C, which is Plan Commission. Alder Gaskell.
Thank you. I'd like to make a motion to approve Resolution Number R-19-045 creating tax incremental District Number 10, approving its project plan and establishing its boundaries, City of Verona, Wisconsin.
Motion by Alder Gaskell, is there a second? Second by Alder Kemp. Alder Gaskell.
In the packet is the draft project plan and boundaries for the TID Number 10. The draft plan has been prepared by Ellers with assistance from city staff. Joint Review Board reviewed and discussed the project at the October 1st, 2019 meeting and recommended for the approval of the creation of the district. The Plan Commission adopted a resolution on October 7th designating the proposed boundaries and approving the project plan for TID Number 10. Tentatively, the Joint Review Board will adopt the project plan and establish the boundaries at their meeting on November 5th, 2019.
Thank you for that explanation. Questions, comments on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor of Resolution Number R-19-045 creating a tax incremental District Number 10, approving its project plan and establishing its boundaries for the City of Verona, Wisconsin, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no? And that motion passes. Anything further, Alder Gaskell?
No, thank you.
Next up, we'll move on to 10D Public Works Sewer and Water Committee. Who's handling it? Alder Kemp.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to make a motion approving the developer's agreement with Liberty Business Park for the Liberty Drive extension.
Motion by Alder Kemp, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Alder Gaskell. Alder Kemp.
This developer's agreement with the Liberty Business Park is for the extension of Liberty Drive to Wayland Road to facilitate development on additional lots within the business park. This is a privately funded project. City staff and city attorney have worked with the developer of Liberty Park in preparation of the developer's agreement. The agreement anticipates that construction of the public improvements will commence October 29, 2019 and will be substantially completed on or before July 31, 2020, pending permit approvals and any unforeseen field conditions.
Thank you for that explanation. Questions, comments on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor of the developer's agreement with Liberty Business Park for the Liberty Drive extension, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no? And that motion passes. Anything further, Alder Kemp?
Nothing further, thank you.
Thank you. Next, we'll move on to item 11, new business. This is a discussion in possible action regarding Resolution Number R-19-046 approving a development agreement and tax agreement with ACS Holdings LLC for construction of a headquarters building located in tax incremental District Number 10. And before I turn over to Mr. Sayer, I do want to have a question. Do you want to have a general thought that we could potentially have this whole discussion in open session since I think we're pretty much done with negotiations?
I would agree.
Mr. Sayer.
Thank you. In September of 2019, the city approved plans for ACS to build a 47,000 square foot headquarters on Lot 18, Liberty Business Park. That headquarters would be located adjacent to the new extension of Liberty Drive. The new building will include office space and space for manufacturing of engine testing equipment. ACS plans to start construction in the very near future with the completion in 2020. In order to facilitate the construction of the new facility, ACS is seeking an economic development incentive from the city in the amount of $800,000. Staff and the city attorney have negotiated terms for the development agreement for the project. Under the terms of the agreement, the city would provide up to $800,000 in economic development incentives as part of a pay-go incentive. So we would not be borrowing the money upfront, but it would be paid upon after they make their tax payment. And some of that money would go back to the developer. As part of the agreement, the city agrees to pay 90% of available tax increment generated by the property to ACS. The total payments to ACS shall not exceed $800,000. As part of the agreement, ACS agrees to spend at least $8 million on the construction of the project. If less than $8 million is spent, the development incentive will reduce proportionally to the project. In addition, ACS will enter into a tax agreement with the city committing that they will not seek a property tax exemption or egg use valuation during the life of the tax increment district. I'd be happy to answer any questions for you, but I think this is a pretty straightforward agreement that we have. It has been reviewed by the city attorney, Mr. Brian Kleimeyer. He is here tonight as well. And I'm sure he'd be happy to answer any questions that I can't answer.
Thank you for that explanation. Questions, comments from the council? I'll just say, I, you know, I think it's great to see jobs being brought to Verona. This is incredibly low risk for the city because it's a pay-go, it's a pay-go loan. And, you know, I hope we can give ACS Holdings a good welcome to our city. Any other questions or comments? Seeing none, all those in favor of Resolution Number R-19-046 approving a development agreement and tax agreement with ACS Holding LLC for construction of a headquarters building located in tax incremental District Number 10, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no? And that motion passes. We are on to item 12, adjournment. Motion by Alder Ricky, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Alder Cole. All those in favor of adjournment signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no? And we are adjourned at 7:19 PM. Thank you. Who left? Who left? I'll blame it on whoever left. All right, let's try this again. For record-keeping's sake, we needed a motion for 11A. While the council did vote on it, we do have a motion for that, so my apologies for moving too quick on that. With that, Alder Kemp?
I'll make a motion approving Resolution Number R-19-046, approving the development agreement and tax agreement with ACS Holdings LLC for construction of a headquarters building located in tax incremental District Number 10.
Motion by Alder Kemp, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Alder Riki. Thank you to Clerk Clark for catching that also. Any discussion on the motion? Alder Riki?
I'm just happy to say that this is, to see that this is going into District 4, Verona.
Any other comments? With that, seeing none, all those in favor, for real this time, of Resolution Number R-19-046, approving a development agreement and tax agreement with ACS Holding LLC for construction of a headquarters building located in tax incremental District Number 10, signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, no? And that motion passes. Should we move to re-adjourn?
Why not?
A motion to adjourn again would be in order.
So moved.
Motion by Alder Riki, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Alder Cole. All those in favor of adjournment signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, no? And we are adjourned at 7:23 PM. Thank you all.[1349.33]